Welcome tonight. It's Monday, September 29th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. First on the agenda is city updates by Chief of Staff Brian McCain, 15-minute presentation.
Good evening, sir. So Pueblo Parks and Rec, we're having a candy drive. Pueblo Parks and Rec is doing a candy drive for two upcoming events, including the Haunted Rides at City Park on October 17th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and on October 18th from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. El Central will also host their trunk or treat. Bless you.
Thank you.
On October 25th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. We're taking candy donations all the way through October 23rd at either location, either the Parks and Rec admin office in City Park or at El Central de Quinto Soul located at 609 East Sixth Street. Little Dribblers Basketball League with coed division, four to five years and six to eight years. Registration ends October 1st with a $65 participation fee. Late registration is October 6th to 13th. You can register online at pueblo.us, Parks and Rec, or over the phone or in person at 719-553-2790, or just go to the Parks and Rec headquarters at City Park. Town Halls. Mayor Graham is joining Commissioner Swerengen, DA Bové, Sheriff Lucero, and Pueblo Police Chief Knoller for a town hall on Thursday, October 2nd from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the Sangre de Cristo Arts Center. The topic of discussion will be crime and public safety. Mayor Graham is also hosting a town hall on Tuesday, October 7th at CSU Pueblo in the OSC Ballroom at 5:30 PM. Just so you know, the Political Science Club has invited her to speak to the students and the campus community, but the event is open to the general public. It will be livestreamed on Facebook Live on the Mayor Heather Graham Facebook page if you're unable to attend in person. Some PD updates. Last week in patrol, the following occurred. In addition to over 2,800 calls for service, the dice team issued 11 loitering citations, five theft citations, five trespass citations, three drug paraphernalia citations, two open container citations, four no camping citations, two warrant arrests, 67 fentanyl pills seized, and one gun seized in a POPO charge filed. In Watch One, 23 self-initiated calls for service, including six COP calls, nine traffic stops, five walker stops, and two suspicious vehicles, three speeding tickets on Elizabeth Street, seven various citations issued, six warrant arrests, and handled homicide on the south side. Watch Two, the Northern Avenue COP Project area, five curfew in the park citations for failure to yield, didn't stop for the officers on traffic stops in the area, and six citations written for various other offenses. And Watch Three, the Northern Avenue COP Project area, conducted over 181 self-initiated calls in this area, including 73 COP calls, 22 walker stops, 38 traffic stops, and eight suspicious vehicle contacts. One PR bond issued for immunity warrant, three misdemeanor warrant arrests, six citations for loitering, six traffic citations, two trespassing citations, and seven FTYs on traffic stops. Conducted over 280 self-initiated calls in this area, including 73 COP calls, 33 walker stops, 57 traffic stops, 10 suspicious vehicle contacts in the Northern Avenue Project area, Abriendo Mesa Junction area, and the downtown area. And with that, that concludes my update.
Okay, any, oh, just for the record, Regina Meistri, Council Meistri is on Zoom. Counselor Latino, did you have some?
How about drive-bys, terms of shootings at vehicles on the north side, in particular at the hotels?
I could get that information for you. I don't have it right now, but I know what you're talking about.
Thank you. I would like that information.
Count, President Mark Hayliff.
Hey, yeah. I just want an update. I'm looking at the work session presentations, and October 20th, we have the budget presentation, but will we have it in our hands by the 14th?
Yeah, you'll have it, find it at your desks on the 14th, and then a week to review, and then we'll do the 90 minutes I think they have slated for work session. Then if council wants additional, after that, we can put those on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other comments? Mike, Council Meistri, you okay? I don't know if she's there. Okay, I guess we'll move on to item agenda.
I'm here. I'm okay for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Item agenda, HSPPR 2026 Budget, Humane Society Pike's Peak Region. We have Kelly Likes, the President and CEO, and Julie Justman, the Vice President of Operations. You have a, this is a 30-minute presentation. Put your mics on, guys. All right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us, council members. We are very appreciative to be able to share some additional information about our budget and hopefully answer your questions. I would like to also acknowledge the staff and the volunteers who joined us today. So if you guys could stand behind us, I won't go through everybody because there are quite a few. But we've got representatives from our volunteer staff, our ALE team fundraising. We have donors here. We also have Cooper's companions here to support us. So thank you so much for joining us. We're so appreciative. Yeah. Okay. Let me see if I can operate. Fantastic. Okay, just some introductory information. We want to acknowledge and say that we relate to Pueblo's budget deficit. We have been in a budget deficit since 2024. And so we understand that that comes with some difficult conversations and some difficult decisions. So we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that first. We recognize that other Pueblo internal departments have been asked to pause on projects, not hire additional staff. But unfortunately, we can't pause on animals entering the shelter. We're an open-admission shelter, and what that means is when animals come to us, we address the animal that's right in front of us. We don't turn anybody away for any reason. The highest driver of our increased budget request is a significant increase in the number of animals, which you'll see on the next slide, and the calls from our community for increased services from our animal law enforcement team. What I also want to say here is, you know, we operate at a level of service and a standard of care that is best for the animals and the community. This includes best practices for animal shelters that we just simply will not compromise on. So why? Why are we asking you for an increase in our contract cost? Back in 2022, was the last time we had our contract negotiations? We based this contract for 2023 through 2025 on 5,200 animals entering the shelter. As you can see below, we used averages from the year 2020 and 2021. Since 2023, HSPPR has provided shelter and animal law enforcement services to 8,200 animals annually. So you can see that's creating a gap in our funding. So you'll see in 2023, we housed 8,200 animals. And again, in 2024, we anticipate seeing the same number of animals in 2025. So just a little bit of additional information. You can see on this slide the amount of funding we requested from the city of Pueblo and the amount awarded. And because of those additional animals, we did ask for increase in funding, but we did sign a three-year contract with a 3% annual increase each year. So we were locked into that contract, and we also knew that we wanted to fulfill that contract the best that we could. You'll see that this has created a budget deficit in 2024 of $270,000. And then for this year, we're in a budget deficit of about $434,000 because of these increased animals and our increased costs. Right. So when we look at some contract considerations, we are really requesting an additional $170,000 over what you're paying us in 2025, which is $1.8 million, to make our 2026 budget whole, to address the number of animals that are coming into our shelter. We have also offered to credit back $273,000 in licensing fees, restitution, bond, and impound fees to reduce the cost of the contract. We've not done this previously. We feel like this is a significant offer to help offset some funding. And in subsequent years, this amount of funding through licensing can also be increased through the city helping us enforce getting rabies information from veterinary hospitals so that we can sell more licenses to the public. And licensing really helps us, A, offset that contract cost, but B, also get animals back to their homes faster, know that they have a rabies vaccination on file. If someone gets bit, it just does a lot of good for the community. Some additional considerations include, we provide about $2 million worth of public services to the Pueblo community. This is completely outside of your contract funding, and so HSPPR provides this through donor dollars, fees for service, and it really helps improve the overall health of animals in the community. So what we provide, some things we were offering to the community include public veterinary services, which include low-cost spay and neuter. We know that through spay and neuter, we can reduce the overall animal population and hopefully reduce the number of animals coming into the shelter. We offer low-cost or free vaccines. Oftentimes, we'll get vaccines donated to us and we're able to pass that on to the community just to make sure that animals are healthy in our community. Veterinary wellness services, so our vets can take a look at pets and give, give their owners some tips on how they might better care for their animal and just make sure that animal is happy and healthy. We also provide trap neuter return, and that's our community cat program. Those cats otherwise would have to come into the shelter, but what we do is we have colony managers who take really good care of those cats out in the community. They stay out of the shelter. We spay and neuter them through natural attrition. Their population does go down, and you are not paying for those cats to come into the shelter as part of the contract. We also provide a lot of education for our community, and that's through youth education services. Sometimes we'll have kids come in and read to the animals. We're trying to do some family camps for folks just to learn how to better take care of their animals and how to safely approach pets that they don't know. We also do quite a few events within the community, and we also offer responsible pet ownership classes for folks. We also respond in emergencies. So if there's a fire out in Pueblo somewhere, our team is right beside first responders to help with the animal side of that emergency response.
I wanted to bring to your attention one of the impacts that has resulted in additional animals into the community. This information that you're seeing, these numbers, these intake numbers are for licensed, PACFA licensed shelters and rescues in the Pueblo County area. And the license, the information is coming directly from the PACFA website. And you'll notice that for HSPPR Pueblo in 2024, it's showing a number of 8990. That number does include our trap neuter return cats, so that's why that number is different than the number that we're showing you for the contract, because you're not taking on the responsibility of the trap neuter return program. But it's, if you look, in 2018, we were handling approximately 80% of the community animals needing shelter. And for whatever reason, many of the shelter rescues have reduced what they're able to do in the community. So now in 2024, we handled 93% of the animals needing shelter in the community. So whenever their capability and capacity goes down, those animals ultimately generally end up at our shelter. Another consideration is, we're not seeking to collect budget shortfalls from past years, and we're just trying to correct the path going forward and address the significant increase in the animals sheltered every year. We just can't continue to subsidize a Pueblo contract with donor dollars from other jurisdictions or from board reserves. And we've outgrown the shelter space when we reached this 8,200 number, or even before that. We use our Colorado Springs Shelter to, you know, basically subsidize the number of animals that are coming into the Pueblo shelter. So we transfer out about 2,000 animals out of the Pueblo shelter. Many of those are underage animals needing foster, and they leave relatively quickly. So the cities, not city and county, are not taking on most of the burden for the costs of those animals. They're being transferred out before a whole lot is being invested into them. And so 1,500 of those, 2,000 transfers out of the Pueblo shelter are going to our Colorado Springs facility. Like I said, many are foster animals that are underage. There's many that are in need of a higher level of veterinary care because we have a lot of more veterinary resources in our Colorado Springs shelter. And so like major, they need major procedures like an amputation or eye nucleation that we can't get to in Pueblo. The animal will be transferred if they're stable to our Colorado Springs facility. And then also things like complicated dentals, those are all going north. So all of those expenses that are being put into animals that are originating in Pueblo are landing in our Colorado Springs budget more so than Pueblo. So we are, we are taking care of, you know, 2,000 animals are being taken care of outside of Pueblo that came from Pueblo. Sorry, I lost my screen there. Okay. So it, us being able to transfer animals that quickly helps us keep them moving through the shelter. Our length of stay is, is really fantastic when you could look at other shelters across the state and across the region. We're usually around seven days for dogs, length of stay, which is unheard of for most shelters, and eight days for cats. So our processes are as efficient as possible to really save as much money as possible because the longer that the animals are staying in the shelter, the higher your costs go. And in 2025, also of note, we responded to 17 large-scale impounds already this year with, some with more than 40 animals involved in one case. So it's like 183% increase over last year, and it puts a huge string on our space and resources, not just in Pueblo, but also when we have to move those animals north to our Colorado Springs facility. And animal shelters nationwide are in a crisis. Shelters are overcrowded, and animals are staying longer, creating a bottleneck. Spaying, spay and neuter funding from major funders is minimal. And because our shelters, shelter in Colorado Springs and our relationships with other shelters across the state, we're, we're just not experiencing the overcrowding, which is better for the animals, it's better for the public. I'd say better for the contract, even though the number of animals is higher than the shelter can hold on an annual basis. And we're investing donor dollars into things like spay and neuter services and trap neuter return to actively reduce the number of animals in the community. So eventually, our hope is that's going to pay off, and the number of animals will reduce, and therefore the cost will reduce. Another thing that we've started doing was talking to other entities that are doing access to veterinary care work in the community, helping each other, talking about what we're planning, the events that are happening. We know that we cannot reduce the number of animals coming into the shelter or reduce the number of animals out in the community needing help by ourselves. This is a much broader problem than that. So we're lucky to have partners that are willing to talk about, what, what else can we be doing? Can we be doing more spay and neuter? Can we be doing more vaccination events so that we can raise the community immunity of the animals so that if they do land in the shelter, maybe they're not going to have parvovirus, which is extremely expensive and labor-intensive to treat?
Yep. So all that's to say is, for us, there is simply no contract reduction for shelter services when the shelter is experiencing a 58% increase in the number of pets from the community from the time of the last contract negotiation. We went through our budget. We attempted to cut some services to reduce our price for 2026, but we can't reduce a significant number of services without violating animal welfare, violating city ordinances and state laws and risking our reputation. I think last Monday, someone brought up that it's a 60% increase in the funding ask, and that is directly correlated with the number of animals that are coming in and the increased requests for our services through animal law enforcement. So some questions came up, both during our contract negotiations and last week. And so one of those questions was, why don't you credit back adoption fees? So the contract partially funds for animal care, sheltering, customer service, and those veterinary fees. But HSPPR also kicks in our own funding as well. So we spend about $366,000 on veterinary expenses and $582,000 on shelter expenses. If we credit back full adoption fees, we would need to charge full expenses for vet care provided in the shelter and shelter expenses to the contract. Essentially, we'd be creating more expenses for all of you. What I'd also like to point out is, in that shelter revenue, that $670,000, that's not all adoption fees. Adoption fees result in about $450,000, and a vast majority of the rest of those funds are for end-of-life services for the public. So if your animal has reached the end of their life and you can't afford to go to a veterinarian, that's a service that we provide, and that's also out of the scope of the contract. Additionally, our contract explicitly states that we retain these adoption fees, and that was agreed upon multiple times throughout this negotiation process until our most recent meeting. So a couple more questions. What's this expense for volunteer services? Our volunteer program in Pueblo reduces the number of full-time staff needed to fulfill contractual obligations. So our volunteers are fostering underage animals. They're also walking animals, providing animal care, and they result in about four to five additional staff members that we don't have to hire, and this is an expense that we split with city and county. There's also a question about getting to use that building for free, and why isn't that accounted for? We do value that in-kind contribution of the building within our financials. And also, back, back in the day, back in 2002, when this partnership began, we had an agreement that we would all work together to build a new shelter for the community. So HSPPR heavily supported the bond initiative to build the building. We contributed financially, and we also promoted this bond initiative with our contacts to make sure that it passed. We also had that property donated to HSPPR, and then we did sign over that property to the city. We also raised half a million dollars from private donors to furnish and equip the building. So we also put in here just a couple of questions. What does that communication cost include? So our communications team spends about 15% of their time on Pueblo contracted related items, and so we've allocated 15% of their expenses to the contract. This includes doing PSAs about leaving animals in hot cars, how to properly care for animals, et cetera. So just promoting the overall animal welfare in our community and telling people, you know, just some information to keep their pets safe. We also spend a lot of time combating social media around court cases and dangerous animals in the community. Oftentimes, there's a lot of misconception about what we actually do in the community, and so we spend quite a bit of time on social media trying to educate folks. We also have to maintain our website that provides information on lost pets and other contracted services. And if you've ever done website maintenance, you know that it's an ongoing process, and it can be quite expensive. So that is also included in that cost. What does the administrative allocation include? So we have 11 different contracts with 11 different municipalities. And because we've got one centralized administrative team, that does help each one of those contracts reduce their overall administrative budget, and those are allocated according to the size of the contract. These administrative functions include accounting, finance, IT, HR, and general management. So there were some questions last time about transparency, and we want to make sure that you all know that we are trying to be as transparent as possible. So we do provide quarterly presentations and data provided to city council and county commissioners. All of that data is sent to you via email quarterly. We have been raising the red flag about the animal numbers and the significant increase since 2022, and you guys were all very kind in 2024 to recognize that and help us with some additional funding. You've gotten a few emails about some large-scale impounds this year, both to city and county officials, just to know what's going on with HSPPR. We also provide, 10 times a year, we do liaison committee meetings. That is part of the ordinance. And we do that, and we provide animal data, calls for service, data around our veterinary programs at each meeting. We unfortunately have not gotten consistent representation from the city at those meetings. We do have other community partners that attend regularly, police department, health department. They do show up and come and ask questions. We do also have all of our data on our website. I listed it here if you're interested in taking a look. We've got our annual report, our 990, our audited financials, and then all of the data that we report to PACFA is on there as well. We also report all of our animal data to Shelter Animals Count, which is a national database. So you can compare us with other shelters, and you can look at all of our data there anytime you like. We also address concerns and inquiries from the community council, whomever asks us, in a timely manner to be good partners because we think that's important. And then just a couple points of clarification from last Monday. Because our contract ends on December 31st, we've respectfully requested that the city provide clear direction on the contract by October 1st. We know that you guys all have your budget meetings, but we would just like to know what you're going to put in your budget for HSPPR so we can adequately prepare for any potential changes in the future. Back in 2018, we didn't have a whole lot of time to do this. It was pretty damaging to our team, and so we want to make sure that we can take good care of them should we need to make any changes because that's really important to us. Our leadership team has also taken a proactive approach in initiating and continuing discussions around our contract renewal, first reaching out to the city in early 2025 to begin the process. Since then, we've provided all requested information and dedicated substantial time and effort to identifying potential cost-saving measures. In order to move forward effectively, we did agree to an additional meeting via Zoom to walk through our financials with the city staff just so that they could better understand that. And that was really to stop this constant churn of financial questions about the budget. And we have to make a decision soon, so we wanted to walk through those. We did offer to record that so it could be shared again in spirit of transparency. We met with the city on March 6th, August 8th, and September 3rd to have contract discussions. And so we just wanted to point that out there as well.
Just another point of clarification. When the city presented last week, when staff presented, they listed the non-departmentals, and I just wanted to point out that there's only two in that list that are providing for public safety and public health. So in the past, under different city leadership, under the city manager, they basically referred to us as a fourth bargaining unit, not as a nonprofit who has to go through a grant process for a government service contract. So this new methodology that they're using is very different and definitely not something that we're used to because we're not a nonprofit asking to have our nonprofit work supported. We're providing governmental service, and it's a contract for service rather than a grant. Just wanted to point that out. And then just revisiting 2019, you know, when the, the contract disruption happened, Pause for Life, operating as Community Animal Services Pueblo, within 30 days of operating, beginning operation for the city and county, they were under investigation by PACFA, the Pet Animal Care Facilities Division of the Department of Agriculture. And within 90 days, they surrendered their operating license because they were facing having it revoked. And the leaders faced multiple charges for animal cruelty, and ultimately, they were convicted for animal cruelty for the, for the lack of care that the animals at the shelter were being provided. We agreed immediately to step back in on a limited basis, and we were fully operational within a few months. We had to try and rehire staff that we had lost. We'd lost long-term staff with institutional knowledge in the shelter. We returned despite some staff having death threats. Some of our staff fearing going out in public in 2018, intense public scrutiny, and negative press generated by a small group of very vocal citizens. I personally had to get a permanent restraining order after I received death threat. So it's not something we take lightly. Our team, our team still feels the impact of this disruption. We still have not gotten back to where we were when the contract disruption hap, before the contract disruption happened. And in terms of providing community services, volunteer retention, and community reputation, it took us years to get where we were, and that was lost in a heartbeat. And after re-entering Pueblo, we agreed to come to monthly community meetings and report our data quarterly and do quarterly presentations for the city and county government to make sure that we're offering all the information that we have related to the operations at the shelter. And there are some additional slides after this one, and there really are just informational slides about some of our programming. But as far as our presentation for tonight to talk about the budget issue, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any comments, questions by council? Council Floris, please.
Yes, thanks for the information tonight. I, I wanted to dig a little bit deeper since a big deal was made out of your financial statements. And one of the areas that I wanted to dig a little bit deeper is, as I understand, HSPPR has a reputation in the United States, not just in Colorado, that you represent best practices and really are in the upper 2% of all animal shelters in the United States. That, that's really saying a lot about how professional of an organization. That, that's really saying a lot about how professional of an organization you are. But what I wanted to focus in on, I think that that reputation zeros in on, on the money that you, if you look in your financial statements, you have received five hundred and seventy-two thousand in donor funds and four hundred and thirty-six thousand in estate gifts and people leaving you money through their wills and their assets once they pass away. Can you elaborate? I kind of feel that that's tied into your reputation. Otherwise, if we were with somebody else, we may not have that same kind of gift giving. And your reputation is really the foundation of, of that. And so, did I look at that correctly? That's revenue that in the absence of your reputation may not be on this financial statement. And you might be somebody different sitting before us that wants this contract but does not have the ability to offset the cost for the city of Pueblo if you didn't have the kind of reputation that you had.
Yes, that's correct. We are incredibly fortunate. We have a core group of donors that support the work that we do, and we're also very fortunate to receive estates. These funds in particular were from a woman who was helped by animal law enforcement probably ten years ago, and she remembered that and moved to Virginia, lived in Pueblo most of her life, moved to Virginia, left us a very nice gift in her will. We can't always count on those funds because we can't count on people passing away, of course. But when we get those nice gifts, they do help offset the cost. And you'll see in some of those financials, we had some years where we got significantly larger gifts that also helps offset the deficit that we were in.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about your expenses. You are very similar to the city of Pueblo in that the majority of your costs are your labor costs. And I, I just did a quick review of your, of your financial statement, especially in the expense side, that seventy, probably around seventy-five percent of your costs really is just labor paying salaries to people that are needed to care for your animals. And, but I wanted, you have a significant amount of law enforcement individuals that are paid well under what law enforcement individuals get paid. And so you're not, you're, you're, according to my calculations, you, you're paying somewhere between twenty-eight dollars an hour to twenty-two fifty. So you have, and I don't know about the law enforcement, but it, it sounds to me like you're starting them out at about fifty-five to fifty-eight thousand. Whereas in Springs and in Pueblo, a law, law enforcement officer is more like sixty-five and seventy as a rookie. So could you talk a little bit about your labor costs?
Sure. You are correct. It is a significant part of our budget. We do need quite a few people to provide the level of care that those, that we expect, and frankly, the community also expects. Our animal law enforcement team, we continually strive to get them to the same level as code enforcement. Unfortunately, because we are a nonprofit, we can't pay the same. And also unfortunately, because we've got such a good reputation in the community and we have our own training within HSPPR for animal law enforcement officers, they do oftentimes get poached by other law enforcement organizations or adjacent organizations. So we are constantly trying to play catch-up and trying to get them to the same level of pay as code enforcement officers. But unfortunately, we continue to lag behind.
One of the things that your organization does, if, if there's a crime that's committed and you have, you, you, the, the police call you and say, we've just arrested, arrested somebody that committed a crime, but he's got two dogs, you have to go accompany a law, the law enforcement officers to care for the animals. It's similar to children, I guess. And so you're called out constantly for that kind of situation, as I understand.
Our team is frequently assisting the police department with things, just like you mentioned. They also assist, you know, if, if they have a warrant and they're going out to a home and they need to arrest someone, we will take those animals. If someone gets in a car accident, we will also respond there. If somebody gets pulled over in their car, we will also respond if there's an animal in the vehicle. So we are often and very frequently assisting law enforcement.
I just have a couple more questions. I just got a, an email today of all things, and I'm sure it was an interested citizen in the community, that they had done a little bit of analysis on the fees. I wanted you to go over the, the fees that you guys charge as far as licenses, your impound fees, restitution, the court system and the money that you get there. And then you also have what's called a surrender fee. And what this citizen was talking about is that our fees are way below the national average. It's that, and, and I only point that out because I see the city, our city budget benefiting by maybe looking at those fees and maybe increasing them. Your thoughts on that?
The board fees, impound fees, board fees, what is set for restitution, and licensing fees are all set by city ordinance and county resolution. So yes, those can absolutely be looked at. I will tell you that even though they are part of the, what is prescribed in the city ordinance and county resolution, that there are many times that the citizen who's coming to pick up their dog that maybe has gotten lost and we impounded it and kept it safe and they came and found it, they may not be in a financial position to pay all fees or sometimes even any fees. And so we do what we can to get as much as we can, but we have found over time that it makes no sense to hold the animal and tell them they must pay all the fees because then it increases our costs and the cost to the city and the county if we are holding this animal and it's keeping this family apart. So we do work and work together with the owner to try and collect as much as possible. We even now have an opportunity for a payment plan that they can enter into to try and collect as many fees as possible. But even though they are prescribed by ordinance, there are quite a few times that we do have to either reduce the fees or sometimes just waive fees. We do try to always collect on the license as a matter of point, but know that it's, it's a struggle. And if we, if we hold the dog and tell you, you have to pay full fees, we've got an unhappy citizen and we have an unhappy dog, and the dog ends up staying longer in the shelter, and then they can get upper respiratory and become sick, and the costs just rise from there. So just know that it's, it's a challenge. And then even when this, there is restitution that is ordered by the courts, whether it's municipal court or county court, you know, sometimes those never get paid. So we may have the, you know, the, the ticket that says you get paid this restitution from this cruelty case or this dangerous animal case. We may never collect. It's, it's sometime, it's quite frequent that we don't collect on those. So as, as good as we are at making sure that we have all the information from the courts so that they can order the proper amount of restitution, the board fees that are prescribed by ordinance, and then any veterinary care that's been provided to the animal while it's been there for a court case, we just don't simply always get to see the benefit of that order of restitution.
What is your relationship with Petco? Not the economic arm of the city, but the, the retail store.
We are currently an adoption partner with Petco, so currently we do put cats up for adoption in the Petco store. And so they, they move forward with doing the paperwork with the person who wants to adopt the cat. And they also are very generous in in-kind donation and things that maybe went on sale, didn't sell. They'll donate some products that we can then use in our foster care programs or in some of our other, other programming.
I have some more questions, but I don't want to dominate this.
Well, you're doing that right.
I'm going to let you guys have a chance to talk, but I do have about three other questions.
Okay, Council Joe Latino.
Yes, it's not a question. I just want to congratulate you. Thank you for what you've done because I, I have visited prior to your taking over. And I know what it was then, and I know what it is now. And I've visited since you've taken over. So I want to compliment and congratulate you for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Ma, Maestro, you have anything? Know if she's there or not. Oh, my, I've got a couple of questions real quick. Just for clarification purpose, I want to make sure I got this down. You went to eighty-two hundred animals from three thousand less in two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five. Is that right?
Yes.
And then you said you had a credit back of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, which is over a quarter of a million dollars in reference to licensing fees, restitution bonds, and impound fees. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be for the two thousand and twenty-six contract. That's what we would print it back. Yes.
Okay. Could you just clarify it just a little bit more so we can get a good understanding of what that means?
Sure, absolutely. So our team collects licensing fees. You license your pet. They get a rabies vaccination. We license them. We know where they belong. It's a way to track that. It's a way to track that they've had their rabies shot, and we collect the fees for that. In our other jurisdictions, we do credit those licensing fees back to that community for the contract. And so we're unsure why that wasn't done for Pueblo previously, but with an administrative change at HSPPR, we took a look at it and we feel like we should make it fair across the board for all the contracts. And so that's why we've credited those back.
Okay. One more question. In reference to the outlook for veterinarians, how you guys doing?
Well, well, we're fully staffed for our positions for our organization. Now, however, the, the Pueblo community is in desperate need of more veterinary clinics, that there's a shortage across the country. So it is definitely considered a veterinary desert. And I, I don't know that that's going to change anytime soon. There's about ten new colleges coming on, online across the nation this year and probably more moving forward to hopefully have more veterinary graduates. And maybe we'll start to see something change also with the passage of the mid-level practitioner. Once those rules get settled out, that might be able to help increase the number of pets that can get access to care in this community. But it is still very, very tenuous here. Emergency care overnight is, you don't have any here. In fact, we had to add staff to be able to take animals from animal control that are picked up, hit by a car, injured or very ill anytime after seven PM and transfer them all the way to Colorado Springs for emergency care, basically. So that's, that's a huge expense, and it's not what we like doing, but it's what we're forced to do right now. We are working within a coalition of, of, of groups in the southern Colorado to just help each other and communicate about what we could be doing, what, putting on events. There was just an event over at Pause for Life that partnered with Res Dog Rescue. They just did three hundred and seventy-some sterilizations over there this last long weekend. We have an event coming up on October tenth and eleventh, a two-day event. We're partnering with Rocky Mountain Spay and Neuter to, at the fairgrounds at the event center. We're hoping to do around two hundred sterilizations, and we're, we're not sure how many vaccines we're going to do because it's going to be free vaccines for dogs and cats. And so, you know, we, we try to supplement some of that, that is missing in this community, but there's only eight brick and mortar veterinary clinics here for a community of about a hundred and sixty thousand for the whole county. And it just gets worse east and south. So any people that are relying on, on Pueblo for, people rely on Pueblo from eastern Arkansas Valley and even south for a lot of different services. If they used to rely on Pueblo for veterinary care, that's just not something that is even feasible anymore because most clinics are, most clinics are not taking new patients. So it's difficult.
Just got one more question I want to ask. And then I'll pass it on to Mr. Boston and then Mr. Flores. In reference to the contract times, you said, today's the twenty-ninth. You're talking October first. How do you plan to achieve that?
Well, we had hoped that we would at least have some direction about what's going to go into the budget. Obviously, that may go longer, but we just hope to know as soon as possible so that we can make the changes that we need to, should we need to.
Okay. May, do you have anything to say about the contract stuff? Okay, we're good. All right, Council Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually got an email today that has several questions regarding this, so I'm just going to ask those for them because I don't have the answers. So when it comes to the licensing, is HSPPR actively going out into the community and seeing if pets are licensed? And if not, who is?
Well, currently, nobody is. It's, we're not going door-to-door. We're just not staffed and able to do that. How the licensing function happens is if an animal is reclaimed or adopted through the facility, then a license is sold then. Also, whenever we receive information that an animal's been vaccinated against rabies in the community, then our licensing partner, DocuPet, is, and we, we have that information given to us that is given to our licensing partner, who then is contacting that pet owner to facilitate the sale of a license. There's no door-to-door. This is not feasible for us to, to do that.
Okay. If pets aren't licensed, what is the, the fine that the owner receives? Or is there one?
If they're cited, then I would have to rely on one of our animal law enforcement. Yeah, it's assessed by the court.
And then if the court, the court does assess a fee, who would be collecting that fee? Would it be going back to HSPPR?
No, the courts would be collecting that fee. And I do want to back up and say that when our officers are contacting citizens in relation to any type of call, they are verifying whether the animals there are current on licensing or not, and they are able to sell licenses in the field. So some, there's quite a few licenses that get sold in the field by our officers just through the nature of initiated contact.
And then these licenses are only good for a year, correct?
Or three, depending on what the citizen chooses.
Okay. And then if the license were to expire, do you guys reach out and let them know that it needs to be renewed? That's.
Yes, we do.
All right, those are all the questions I was emailed. Thank you.
Okay, Council Flores, you've got the last questions coming up?
Okay, just quickly here. It sounds to me that the budget deadline, you have a little bit of flexibility knowing that we have to go through a budget process and all of that. So I think you've answered that question, just so there is no misunderstanding about that. I also wanted to indicate to the public that we get a report every quarter from you, and you've been consistent for the last three or four years of giving us the save rate. And I want to remind the public about how significant this is, that you have hovered anywhere from eighty-six to eighty-eight percent. I think one month you were at eighty-nine. That's significant because when the city actually ran the animal shelter, the save rate was around forty-one percent, and this was way back, probably ten years ago. And, and I, I like to remind people of services that the community gets from the city. Sometimes it's better to subcontract those out to professional people. I, I use the zoo as an example, too. Those people have a different attitude about animals, and they get, a lot of them are educated in how to take care of them and all of that. And I kind of feel the same way about HSPPR because I have such a tight regard for what you do. But I wanted to talk about the process here. The process is, we're just getting information right now. This is a work session. At, at this stage, I would like to encourage your organization to get back together with the city because it will be the city and the mayor that will provide us with what they think they're going to bring forward when we start the budget process in a couple of weeks. And I, I would like you to consider one other thing, and that is entering into a three-year contract and lowering the cost to the city for this next coming year, just because of, a lot of unknowns are happening out there. I think this time next year, we're going to have a better handle, I think, of not only the national economy, but our local economy here in Pueblo. So I would encourage you in the next step of getting together with, I think your contact is Mrs. Cook, and indicating that, that maybe the increase can be spread out over the next three years and maybe making it less impactful this year on our budget, but incorporating that in the second and the third year. I, I think that, that might somehow lessen the, you know, the blow to the city in, in some way. A gesture on your part and the city that we, we all are in the same boat together. We're, we're both having financial, you know, issues. So that, that, with that all closed, but I just wanted to, to offer that as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we good. Before we.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Council Maestro.
Mr. Gomez, I just would like to thank HSPPR for coming in and explaining this to council and giving their side of the story. And so I I really appreciate it. It's, it's very understandable as to why, you know. Unfortunately, we just have a high population of dogs and cats in this community that are needing specialized care. And I would hate to see those services go away. And so thank you for updating us on your needs, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to, gonna go to Mayor Graham, Mayor Graham.
Thank you, ladies. Just two questions. Do all of your contracts pay the admin fee?
They do, yes.
And is it, what's it split by? Is it?
So it's split by contract size. I would have to get you the actual percentages, but I can absolutely get those to you.
I think ours was fifteen percent.
I would have to look, and I'm sorry, I'm not pulling it up out of my brain at this moment, but I'd be happy to get you the breakdown between our eleven contracts.
Okay, and then when you talk about the two thousand animals that were transferred out, is that reflective in the amount of animals you're in that you file on your report? Or are we looking at an additional two thousand animals when you said that the animals were transferred to Colorado Springs? So which which shelter actually gets those marks?
So those two thousand animals are included in that eighty-two hundred. We just simply don't have the resources or the shelter space to hold those additional two thousand. And so we have to move them out of the Pueblo shelter.
So the numbers that you are reporting at the eighty-two hundred are actually two thousand animals less that are actually being served in our shelter?
No, they're they're being served. They're coming into the shelter.
But so you transfer them out for service? So I'm asking, I guess, where do those animals mark? Is it in Pueblo or when they go to Colorado Springs?
Are you talking related to PACFA statistics? They, you have to count all intakes. That's why in that one graph that I was showing you, the community shelters and rescues, the higher, the number is even higher because you have to also count trapneuter return cats. So every shelter that receives an intake, so they will, they will count at both places.
So the numbers that are reported are just the intakes, but it's not the actual number of animals that are served here in the Pueblo shelter?
Well, they're they're still receiving some services. They're just not staying here for full, all the way from intake to adoption. And like I said, most of them are underage foster, foster needs, mostly kittens, underage. So say twenty years ago, those kittens would have been euthanized.
Sure.
But now, because we're able to transfer them out to a community that has more capacity related to foster, they can, they can leave alive and they can go to a foster home and get care and come back to adopt for, to be adopted in our Colorado Springs facility.
So when the two thousand ants for a- animals, though, are transferred out of the public community, that doesn't count as animals that we're paying for, I guess?
You, the, in the, in the overall number, yes. But you're not, you're not experiencing the full expenses for the, all those two thousand animals because we may only intake them and do an initial processing. So say they come in, they get an initial exam, they might get initial vaccines. If they're underage, we're working immediately to find a foster home for them. So rather than them staying additional animal care days in the shelter, they're being transferred out. If they were to stay, if all two thousand of those animals were to stay in Pueblo and we had to service them until final disposition, meaning their adoption, return to owner or euthanasia if necessary, then our costs, our expenses would be higher. They would, they would absolutely be higher if we were having to take all two thousand of those transfers fully to disposition in the Pueblo community. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just, just because your numbers from twenty-twenty-three to now went to eight thousand. So I'm just, is it more like ten thousand or is it more like?
No, the, the.
Six thousand because the two thousand that you said were being transferred out to other communities, I just, I didn't know where that additional three-point-five percent came from, from twenty-three to twenty-five, if they're being transferred out. I think that's what your slide said.
No, the numbers that you get are the actual numbers that come into the shelter.
Or intake, but not necessarily being treated or fostered through the Pueblo community.
Like I said, two thousand animals last year were transferred out.
Okay, so we can, so those two thousand animals, mayor may not be treated with city dollars?
They're initially, they're going to be treated within the shelter. We have to do an intake. We absolutely have to put some resources into them. So they do get some resources, but we're not putting full resources, the full resources that are being put into those animals, especially the fifteen hundred that are landing in our Colorado Springs shelter, those are landing, those extra resources and expenses are coming out of the Colorado Springs budget, not the Pueblo budget. So you may, you may have initial care.
Yeah.
Very, like, exam, initial vaccines, things like that, basic care.
First intake stuff.
Correct.
But the the majority of those bills is being paid out of Colorado Springs.
Well, for fifteen hundred of them, the other five hundred go to other transfer partners. So they would, they would be taking on the costs of those animals once they land in their facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions and or comments? I think we're good, folks. Further, you guys, anything else you ever want to add?
No, thank you so much.
Maestro, you're good? Okay, before we adjourn. Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge the team that came out tonight. Thank you guys for for being here, very impressive. And for the record, we're now adjourned for the regular work session, and we're going to move directly into the regular meeting. President Aleph, it's all yours.
President Aleph, excuse me, can we wait a few minutes so he can reboot the system?